We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Wynn, following by the pledge.
Let us pray. Lord Christ, when you came among us, you proclaimed the kingdom of God in villages and towns. Have mercy upon all of us who live and work in Tyler and Smith County. We give thanks for our mayor, city council, city manager, and all the employees of the city of Tyler. Provide an extra veil of protection on our police and fire department and all first responders. And thank you for the gift that you gave us in your son, Jesus Christ. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with the minutes from December the 11th, 2024.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our one. Call.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This first item is a request that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution of support for the Tyler Trails and Pioneer Crossing Housing Tax Credit Project Proposals and the approval of the waiver of development slash permit fees up to $500 for each project. The, uh, these projects are, or have been submitted to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, Housing Tax Credit Program, the 2025 9% Competitive Housing Tax Credit Program. These are administered by the state. There's no local money aside from the, the waiver of development fees associated with this, this request. Uh, the allocation of tax credits is a very competitive, competitive process. Projects receive 17 points for a resolution of support from the local government, which would be the city council. Uh, a resolution of support for any of the projects will strengthen the developer's application to receive an allocation of low-income housing tax credits through the T D H C A. Uh, we have two projects that were submitted. Well, initially there was three, but we have two here today remaining. Uh, the first project here is Tyler Trails at 1095 East Gentry Parkway. It's the property there in yellow. Uh, this is a request for a development of 77 units, just over 25 units per acre. Um, it's just south of the grocery store right there. Uh, this development would be targeted to, uh, the 55-plus community, and it is in the north end planning area um, in District Four. The, uh, as you see here, this is the zoning map of the, of the area. The property is currently zoned um, mostly industrial or heavy industrial with a little bit of commercial on the, the front edge. Uh, this, uh, for a multifamily development to be, uh, constructed here, it would require a zone change uh, to multifamily. Uh, the Future Land Use Guide, which is in our comprehensive plan, identifies this area as manufactured and industrial, not multifamily. These are just some exhibit, uh, examples of what the applicant submitted for, uh, kind of the appearance of what they plan to develop. Um, and they, they are here as well for questions. This next project is also in District Four. Uh, this is just south of the Walmart off of Front Street. This, uh, this property has frontage on Glasgow Road, um, on the east loop. So, as you see here, the, the property is currently zoned for multifamily, and so would not require a zone change to develop the property that's multifamily. It is, uh, proposed for 78 units, uh, just over 17 units per acre for the, the general population, so would not, would not be age restricted. Um, and I think the intent here is to serve the, uh, uh, the housing needs on the east side of town near, near Midtown District, near the University District as well. Um, that's the location. And this is what they, they've submitted for as an example of what they, they plan to develop. And so these are the, the two projects that we have, uh, both identify, or, uh, accomplish a need in our community. One is additional housing, uh, within the, the city. Um, and then also with them being part of the Housing Tax Credit Program, it's, uh, the ability for more affordable housing within the city. Uh, with that, the, uh, it is recommended that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution in support of, uh, one or both of these projects and the approval of a waiver of development fees in the amount of $500.
Any questions for Kyle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kyle, on Tyler Trails, you mentioned that they do not have the current zoning in place.
Yes, sir.
So, they're asking us to potentially, uh, show support, but they don't have the zoning. And there's no guarantee they're going to get the zoning based on what is around them. Um, I think this project's been in front of us once before, and there was that zoning question and the proximity to La Gloria and the odor and smell. Did they address those in their application or?
Um, they, I think they may want, want to address those questions, uh, here today, but they, they kind of indicated that the, the tracks do separate the, you know, Dellic from, from them and that might serve as a buffer between the two.
I'm more, than the zoning, I'm more concerned about because it doesn't fit with the neighborhood and where's no guarantee planning and zoning would approve that, and then they would have to come back to us um, on an appeal. So the time process, that's, that's a huge concern I have on that one.
Did you say they're here? Someone here to speak?
Yeah.
Is, is applicant here for the one? Come on up. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Alice Woods, 1805 South Third Street here with Trinity Housing Development, and appreciate the question. I'm wondering if I can bring out my presentation. I have a map that I think would be helpful in addressing the zoning issue. Um, certainly we would need to come back for zoning. There's no guarantee of that zoning. However, the timeline around the zoning is a little bit more flexible than what we are required to have in place at the time of application, which is just council support. Uh, but I, I do just want to show the surrounding uses on this site are not industrial, although many of these sites are zoned M1 industrial or directly adjacent to the Super One Foods and Walgreens, which would be a great amenity for seniors potentially in this mixed-income community. And then to the south is a restaurant in development and then 1.2 acres of excess property, which is intended to be sold to another commercial or retail user. And then south of that is an occupied home. And then you can see there's a lot of commercial, restaurant, and retail and residential in the area. So I understand that the future land use map calls out this area as, as being more industrial. However, we don't necessarily see that as the direction this area is going based on what's there and what's planned to be there. And we actually think that mixed-income multifamily for seniors fits very well here. The industrial uses are all solidly across the tracks and, and really not impacting that area. As you can see, you know, it's, it's planned for development for very different types. So just want to make sure that it's clear that yes, while these sites are zoned for M1, that's not the current use.
Any questions for applicant? All right, thank you. These are both in your district.
I know. Kyle, can you move it to the recommendation?
We can't hear you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that the council provide a letter of support for Pioneer Crossing for Housing Tax Credit for, uh, this project. I was wait, I was hoping Kyle would pull up the recommendation.
I don't have it on here. You want to switch it to that? On the agenda?
Very good. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to press the City Council to consider adoption of a resolution in support of Pioneer Crossing Housing Tax Credit Project Proposal and approval of waiver of development permit and the fees in the amount of $500 for the project.
All right. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McCall. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for being here. Uh, M1.
Good morning.
Morning.
Tiffany Curry with Tyler Water Utilities here to present item M1, which is the Consent Decree Capacity Work Group Two, Site 13A2 Improvements, Award of Bid 25-007, with a resolution to reimburse expenditures for future debt. A little bit of background to remind you. Several years back, we partnered with Pipeline Analysis and L and V to complete a hydraulic model of our collection system. The purpose of this hydraulic model was to identify capacity constraints within the system, and we have broken those up into three different groups that will become capacity projects to increase the size of those lines with capacity constraints. Group one capacity is complete. KSA is our design engineer on all three of these groups of work. Um, so group one is complete. The design of group two, which is two segments, um, is essentially complete. 13A2 is what we are awarding today. And then 13C1, uh, I am optimistic you will see in a couple of months. We have a, a few things that we are trying to wrap up on, on that alignment. And then group three, we have the preliminary alignment complete, and now we're starting design. Okay, um, this segment 13A2, which we refer to as Line One, is a total of 18,141 linear feet of sanitary sewer line replacement, ranging from 15 inches all the way up to 42-inch sanitary sewer pipe. And, uh, the alignment runs from north up near MLK down to Bryan Street, through Dellic and through the downtown area. We received bids for this project on January 28th. There were three, uh, bidders on the project, and the low bidder was Belt Construction of Texas in the amount of $28,191,846. My request today is that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Belt Construction of Texas in the amount of $28,191,191,846 for the Consent Decree Capacity Work Group Two, Line Eight, and to adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures from future debt.
Can you go back to the slide, the, the area? So can you kind of walk us through what, what all that's going through and what all's going to be impacted?
Uh, sure. Yes, on the, on the, the north end here, the north end of the alignment, um, we, we've had a total of about 67 easements that we have coordinated with private property owners, residences, as well as some city properties. Um, and we'll be in some backyards kind of cross-country on the northern end more so. Um, then, well, we do cross through a portion, the outer edge of Dellic's property. Um, so they have some requirements for our contractors, which we've coordinated with them. And then, of course, we will be traversing through the downtown area along with a few other contractors that will be working on downtown improvements. So that will require considerable coordination that we are planning for.
What about the, where's the pink and the orange?
So...
Or purple and orange?
That's the line that goes through Elm Street and then starts to go.
Oh, yes. Okay. So just south of downtown, we are go, a lot of that is in streets in our city right of way. Um, we are partnering up with our engineering department to actually separate out a, a separate project so that we can try and preserve the bricks in this area, um, historic area, without impacting or delaying the sanitary sewer work. So Darren is going to put together a package for, um, the paving, the current bricks to be removed and palletized. Our contractor will come through and do his work, and then, once all of the backfill is done, we've had time for any settling to occur. His contractor will come back in and restore the streets in that area.
So a lot of coordination, a lot of, a lot of moving parts and, you know, a lot of communication with the areas that are going to be affected.
Yes, yes, sir. Lots of communication. Um, as I mentioned, we have a little under 70 easements that have been acquired. Um, we have a line list that was put together for our contractor that has specific notes of how to interact with each property owner. Certain property owners have requests, things that we've agreed to help provide so that their, their businesses will not be negatively impacted or we can at least minimize that. Um, so the engineer and myself and the contractor will be working together to try to keep everybody happy during this process.
So can we hand that to your cell phone number?
Hmm, that's possible. Lots of people in the city already have it.
Tiffany, would you mention to him, talk to him a bit about the fact that this is the first of probably, of the two big consent decree projects, and there'll be a second one coming, kind of that timeline so they'll understand.
Yes. So, um, our group two capacity is two lines. This is Line A. It has a significant impact on, um, the downtown area as well as obviously everything you see here. We also have another, you know, significant prod, line, line, our next line that's coming within the next couple of months, I hope, May at the latest, um, that goes through more like the hospital district in that area. So it will also have a very significant impact. Um, we've also been coordinating with many property owners. It's less, I think maybe around 25 to 30 easements have been acquired there. Uh, but similarly, we're doing our very best to prepare the property owners for the impact that they're going to have and, um, working with them to, to mitigate any negative impact that there might be. But that should be, um, a warning before summer. That's our intention.
Any other questions for Tiffany?
So the, this whole section is gravity-fed. No lift stations at all?
Correct. Yes, it is all gravity.
So this money's already allocated in the budget?
This, this money is allocated through bonds. Um, actually, KSA did a really great job of forecasting what the anticipated cost would be. Um, the engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was 30 million, and we came in at, um, 20, was it 28? 28 million, so really, really close to what we expected.
Any other comments? You want to make, you want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by McCall. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tiffany. Leanne.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today we come before you to request the City Council consider naming a current unnamed field at Fun Forest Park in honor of Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior. On Wednesday, January 29th, the Parks Board voted unanimously in favor of the naming of the currently unnamed tee-ball field at Fun Forest Park. After Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior, the field naming was originally presented by the North Tyler Baseball and Girls Softball League. And I would like to read the letter that they proposed and recommended to us. City of Tyler, Texas Parks Board. Per this letter, I am requesting the currently unnamed tee-ball field, baseball field, um, located at Fun Forest Park, to be named the Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior Baseball Field. I make this respectful request not only on my behalf, but also for the community and the Reverend Caraway Senior has served for many years. Per the Tyler, the City of Tyler's Ordinance Guidelines for Naming or Renaming Parklands and Park Facilities, Section 8-57B4, a park can be named in honor of a living community leader. Reverend Caraway is a well-respected community leader. Historically, parks are named after a monetary donor or a coach with hundreds of wins. But Reverend Caraway Senior has impacted and touched the lives of thousands of our youth and adults. A few highlights about Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior. Reverend Caraway is currently the senior pastor of St. Louis Baptist Church in Tyler. He also serves as Smith County Commissioner for Precinct Four. He is also the chaplain of the Tyler High School Football Team, where he provides spiritual guidance to coaches, team members, and staff. Reverend Caraway Senior served the city of Tyler as city councilperson from 2007 to 2013. He has been active in youth sports, including as past president of the Youth Baseball League that previously played at Fun Forest. I personally have seen him not only work on the youth baseball board, but coach, work in the concession stand, and work daily with our youth to help mold them into becoming upstanding young men and women. Reverend Caraway Senior has always championed youth sports, especially in communities where the majority of the youth reside in low to moderate income areas. Reverend Caraway has taught our youth humility, respect, and accountability. The name of the field will honor a deserving individual for his contribution of our youth and community, which he has direct, and has a direct and lasting impact. It is my pleasure to request the name to be Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior Field. I am currently the league president of the North Tyler Youth Baseball and Girls Softball Association. We have played games at the existing baseball field at the Fun Forest for the past two years, and would consider it an honor to play additional fields at the Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior Baseball Field. Sincerely, Stanley, Stanley Trailer, and Stanley is an attendant, as well as Reverend Caraway Senior. So it is my, it is our requen, oh. It is the request. Sorry. It is the request to consider naming the new tee-ball field at Fun Forest Park in honor of Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior.
I hate to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. Reverend Caraway, can you come up here? I hate to talk to you through the crowd. But I want to say, I know you don't want this, and I know that you're a humble man. But I also know that when I came and ran for council in 2014, I came to see. Because you are a man of integrity and you care about your community. And so knowing that you, you don't want this name on there, I know you, I know you don't. But it's an honor, I think, from the city to do this because of who you are and because of contributions you've made to our community. So I, I think that everybody agrees with what I'm saying. You know, thank you for what you do for Tyler, thank you for what you're doing for the county, and just thank you for being who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Commissioner, may I say something? I want to say well-deserving, and we appreciate all the great work that you do in our community. Yes, sir.
You don't have to say anything unless you want to. Come on up to the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, uh, to, to the board and Brother Stan and to this community, I'm so honored for this opportunity. But you know, success like this does not happen with the people you surround yourself with. And so I'm so indebted to all those coaches, Coach Russell, Coach Hack, and all the people that work in the concession stands, because we had a common goal. And the common goal was to impart and to invest into a young people that could pay big dividends for our community as a whole. Uh, I, I just love this community. I think we have a great community. And I think all of us that are given the opportunity to invest in this community should do that. And so, uh, to the Parks Board and to, uh, this City Council of America, I am extremely honored. But at the same time, I'm indebted to so many other people that made this possible, like Brother Stan, uh, that has given so much of his life investing in young people. So thank you so much for this honor. What is an honor that I share with so many other people. But thank you. Thank you for the honor.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, a request of the City Council, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead before I make a motion.
I was going to say, is anybody on the mic question?
Oh, I do. Request that the City Council consider naming a currently unnamed field at Fun Forest Park in the honor of the Reverend Ralph Caraway Senior. So moved. Second.
We got a, a motion by Hawkins, second by McCall. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
Do you want to get to the picture? Is that to the picture?
Stanley, you want to come up?
All right. We are down to the consent agenda. Do we want to approve as presented?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're going to do something a little different this morning. And not many people are aware of this, but we're going to have a little recess. And we were going to go outside for this recess. And we, we had published a gathering notice to be legal, but since it's raining outside, we're not going outside. So what I'd like to do at this point is if the council and the city manager, if we can go down front, and, uh, is there anybody else that's going to join us this morning? Okay, let's all go down.
Wow. They keep on coming. All right. Do we have everyone in here? Y'all come in. Come on, Keater. Well, it's a big day. And first I'll say, just on behalf of the City Council and obviously city staff and citizens that are here, it's a big day that, uh... city staff and citizens that are here, it's a big day that we get to celebrate 10 years of service from our city manager, Ed Broussard. And in 2000, and in 2014, 2015, when I first got on council, I was on the council when we hired Ed, and we had a number of different candidates to choose from, and it was an easy decision, and one of the best decisions we ever made was hiring Ed. And so, it's been an honor to, to serve with you for 10 years, and I, I think you've been one of the longest-serving city managers in Tyler, if I'm not, I don't, I don't know, I don't have any facts. Yes. Okay, y'all, yeah, no, yeah, do, do not fact-check me on that. So we've got a couple of things here. One thing is, we want to present you with a, a key, a key, a key to the city.
No, no.
So, we, we present you, I'll bring you all this stuff in a minute, but we will present Key, Ed with the key to the city, which not everyone gets. And I, and I'll say this, there, should I go there? There, there, there was a guy, there, there was a guy recently at the coffee shop that confronted me and wanted a key to the city, and we don't, we don't just give them to everybody, and he, he was very, very, very upset. But the, I mean that, we don't just give them, we don't just give them to everybody. So, Ed, key to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Ed started this deal with a chicken, and I, I don't really understand the significance of the chicken, but I don't get paid, so I, I don't get paid enough to understand that. But it's a, it's a golden chicken, and Ed, as you all know, gives these chickens to employees that go above and beyond and do things that are special for the city, and so we want to present Ed with his own golden chicken. We also have a number of pictures of Ed with people he works with, and we're all gonna sign this here after a while, but this be for your memories. And I think that's all I have. Is that all I have, Stephanie? Nothing else? Nothing embarrassing?
It's more than that.
Okay.
He has a plant.
Oh, a plant, yeah, yeah. That, that is one of the ugliest plants I've seen. And, and one thing that Ed's probably never had done before is, we're gonna have an Ed Broussard Day. So, whereas in a galaxy far, far away, 10 years to be exact, prosperity has engulfed the city of Tyler. And whereas the fruition of developments of strategic projects, routes to outlying departments, leaving fate in his hands, marching on to resolve city matters with a blockade of trustworthy and supportive coworkers, Ed leads Tyler's heart to its core value of serving others. And whereas the council of all districts endlessly stays, they support having brisket breakfast tacos served every other Wednesday, whereas the endless supply of brisket or breakfast tacos comes as a surprise chain of events. The city of Tyler is proud to have the best city manager in its presence. Now therefore, I, Don Warren, Mayor of the City of Tyler, Texas, do hereby proclaim, February 9th, 2025, Edward Broussard Day, and encourage all citizens to support this
Yeah, this is, I'm very, very rarely caught unaware of what's about to happen or to go down. So, yes, this one, there is both joy and irritation, um, that I'm feeling. It has been, you know, I was joking, you know, city manager's age in dog years, uh, so, you know, the 10 years has really been 70, um, but it has gone by so very quickly. I say this to this community over and over again, whether it be our organization, to our citizens, Tyler is one of the most special places on the earth. You do not, normally, you do not have mayors and city councils that are as supportive of the organization as these seven people are, and the ones that I've worked with before as well. You know, Ralph Caraway was here earlier, and I, I got to work with Ralph when he was on the half-sent board, uh, and, you know, just a man, you know, y'all talk about somebody who just represents Tyler, just like y'all do, but of, every person that I've worked with, bringing forward this spirit of, we are in this together, we are here collectively as a community, we are not here to be adversaries with each other, we are here to join in. And that is something that Tyler has that no place other, other place has. I've been around, uh, trust me, it's, next year will be my 25th year straight as a city manager, uh, which, dog years, I don't know what, I can't do the quick math on that. Uh, but, um, it is, this is the one place I've found that actually has that commonality and that joy, the spirit, that, that just kind of links us all together. And it, it, our citizens are our biggest cheerleaders, and our city staff, you've never seen, as far as men and women, that have more, just, we said, we have that, you know, call-to-serv spirit, you know, every single one of these people in here has that and just, just such abundant amounts of just that they, and, and that's why it's been such a fast 10 years, and it's been such an enjoyable 10 years, because of just the ability for everyone in this community to pull together, to come together, uh, and enjoy making Tyler better every day. Uh, and so, to the mayor, to the city council, thank you for, for making this ride, which was so enjoyable, and, you know, for the years to come, hopefully still, I don't know, we'll see. First part of the performance evaluation is after this, so maybe, you know, this, this might have been my parting gift as well, we'll see. But it has been just incredible, um, and to the city employees that are here, and all, those who are out there still working, um, it is just, thank you for making this so much fun. Uh, I mean, I look around the room, and y'all just, yeah, it's, there's a, a real smile, I think, but there's also just in my heart, I know that there is, I don't know, heart smile, but it's just, I mean, it's just, just beating with just joy and love at seeing y'all here, and just at the work that y'all have done. Um, and so, thank y'all, uh, just, you know, thank, thank you for the support, thank you for the ability just to, to get to work with you every day, and so, to that mayor. Leave it to Parks to make it weird.
We're gonna go back up and, and let the city manager do the city manager's report, and then we're gonna go into executive session, but if we, the, the report's gonna take like two minutes, but if we wait for everybody to get out of here, we're gonna be here for another 30. So let's go back up and, and do the city manager's report.
Yeah.
Ed, I didn't know you had that many friends.
You know, trust me. The big one was my wife showed up. Yeah, she's, she's always working.
That was good.
That was too, it was too sweet. Yeah.
Your head's just now coming back from that deep red to...
Yeah, it's starting to cool down, yeah.
Hey, Ed, don't forget to give that plant to Sammy on Friday for Downtown State.
All right, we are back from recess, and first I'll say, Deborah, thanks for making sure everything was, the gathering notice and everything was done legally and all that, so, 'cause I knew Ed would freak out if it wasn't done correctly, so, anyway, now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is gonna be a big letdown after all that, um, between Ralph and then that, that kindness y'all showed. So, a couple of items of notice, and with the weather turning cold again, I think this is an important one to kind of make note of. Uh, so for Tyler Water Utilities experienced 28 water main breaks during the cold weather in January. Uh, they completed all the repairs, restored service to our customers. The most significant breaks that you probably saw were on Richmond Road and Loop, and Loop 323, and Eighth Street and Broadway. Both of those were 12-inch water main breaks. So our service center was called in additional personnel and worked through the night to ensure that the main breaks would cause as minor damage as possible in the area. Um, and so, this is, we're grateful for the hard work that our water utilities staff has in making those repairs while wet and in near freezing conditions, and this is something especially as we kind of really hit the, for Tyler, the real big winter months now of, and just as it gets cold, you have that possible as far as with the ground contracting and then, uh, you know, shifting, but the thing that hit us on this one was, as it warmed up, then the ground shifting again, and then the breaks. So we expect to probably in February, see similar type of activity, uh, just as kind of, we have this kind of weird weather right now of, like, weeks where it's freezing and weeks where you're in your shorts, so, um, one of the things that our employees that we provided for them, uh, this winter or fall was, uh, we gave them a day that, where they could give back to the community. We call it the Day of Giving, um, and different departments could use that, you could use it personal time to, uh, for a day to go volunteer out in the community, or you could do it as a team. And our Streets and Stormwater Department, uh, really did a great job of going out to the East Texas Food Bank and working out there. Uh, they, those teams came together and did 750 senior boxes, uh, that were able to go out to our community. Uh, and so they also lent a hand in packaging kids cafe after-school bags, uh, and so these bags are crucial for local children, ensuring they have healthy meals and snacks to support their growing and development, but this was something that our, you know, our Streets team and Stormwater Department, uh, went out and volunteered at the East Texas Food Bank, and we're proud of them for giving back to the community in that way. And then finally, I want to invite y'all to, along with the Tyler Fire Department, to our, welcome our two new vehicles, Engine 2 and Engine 7, uh, with push-in celebrations on Tuesday, February 25th. Uh, so the push-in for Engine 2 will be placed, placed on Station 2 over on Old Bullard Road, and then the one for Engine 7 will be at Station 7, which will be at 344 Troop Highway, there right next to the, the cemetery. And so, this is, uh, the addition of these two vehicles allows the fire department to maintain its Class 1 rating for ISO, um, and just kind of a little bit of time, this took, these were the ones we ordered, I want to say, two years ago, uh, three years ago? Three years ago. Uh, just to kind of give you an idea on the timeline, on how long it takes to, to get the fire engines as far as built, and then to us. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Any comments for the city manager before we go into executive session? All right. Uh, the city council may go into executive session regarding any items posted on the agenda as authorized by Title Files, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions of the government code. Personnel matters deliberations regarding the following deployment duties and evaluation of the city manager. Any final action by the city council will be taken in open session. We'll be back in a little while. All right, we are back from executive session, and we have no action, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned.